Thank you for being here, everyone. Is he remote? Okay, then we are a full board. Eight present. Tim is remote. Our, our open meeting this evening was properly included. Thank you, Kate. And we have a request from a board member, and I think it makes sense. That if we could, with the board's approval, change the lineup for this evening. At this point, we have, first up, the facility and potential referendum report. If we could move public comment forward and do that prior to any board business. With the board's approval, I would make that change. Anyone? Not in favor of that? Okay. So I don't know, Kate, if you have a sign up from anybody. Sorry to change it up, so last minute on you.
Nobody signed up?
Oh. No, there was no sign up. Public comment?
You know, we would happily take your public comments. There's a big, long list of rules which I read pretty routinely. I, I think, given the size of the crowd and...
I read them all. Well, try to behave myself.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind standing and, and telling us who you are and...
Sure. My name is Keith, I'm in the Richmond Arrowhead School District. I'm here because of the fact that I saw a $261 million referendum project. I assume this is the meeting that's going to be voted on to move it forward. I cannot believe that a fiscally responsible board, such as the one that I thought we had here, leaving contemplate. To have an average taxpayer in this district pay $1,000 to $5,000 extra per year for 20 years. Is, in this economy with inflation that's going on, I cannot believe that this would be passed. Yeah, I think I read something related to this is going to create efficiencies. I, and maybe I, I didn't look around enough, but what efficiencies are going to be created? I can see utilities. How many teachers, professional staff are going to be laid off? 10, 20, 30, 40, 50? Maybe, but they have to be. So that's where your efficiencies are. So the staff members that work at Arrowhead, I'd be concerned. Improvements. Is this to the superintendent? So rebuild a nice and shiny building. Are the grade points going to go up? Is ATCT, ACT test going to... Is that going to improve scores?
Can't guarantee anything, but we're certainly going to be striving for that.
Yeah, I would say no. New buildings do not make good teachers.
They make better learning environment, so.
Well, good teachers prepare good students.
Absolutely.
And I think we have very good teachers at this school. I don't know if this is one step, you know it's going to fail, and this is the next step. Bring it to us in April, smaller referendum, it will pass. Maybe that, that's the, that's the plan. I don't know. Maybe it isn't, maybe it is. The interest payment alone, for two years, $30 million for two years. $30 million, two years of interest payments. Total payments for two years, $50 million. I don't, I saw maintenance budget out there for $51 million. I'm not sure if it doesn't hold. Something that's old on its side. The maintenance of a bunch of improvements added up to $51, $52 million. Two years' payments could, could do all of those in two years. Uh, I guess one final comment. I've had two, two boys go through this school. Great education, great teachers, but they did not get great teachers and great education because they sat in a nice new building. So to the board members here, and, and the other thing is, you took a survey, so it's got a 43% probability of yes. I think that's probably a high number. I think you're setting yourself up for failure here with the community and the amount of taxes that this is going to increase. So, um, I, I just, I'm going to do everything in my power to talk to as many people as I can and say no on this. So, and thank you for letting me talk.
If, if you're interested in learning more, please take a card from the desk out there. Contact them for Jeff Gross, our business manager, we'd love to talk to you. It sounds like you've missed the past eight, nine months, 10 months of research and meetings and public relations studies. There's so much on our website, if you want to check that out also. But we'd love to talk to you more, to answer more questions I'm sure you have, and this would be the forums, right? Please do.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I, I would just add that I think the folks that had come to a number of the open forums had a number of the issues that you raised this evening addressed. Uh, so truly, I, I would encourage you to, to, to take our superintendent up on it and come tour the facility. Uh, learn what our process has been.
And it's been a lengthy process, and I looked at all the pictures, and the consultants can take all kinds of nice rusty pictures of this and that, and... And the consultants get paid to push this deal forward. That's what they get paid for. Um, and, and so I understand the economics of it, but I don't understand how does this improve the education of our kids? And I'm willing to spend money personally on this school, but it's $261 million to demolish two buildings, which, okay, they're 50, 70 years old. So what? There's houses around the area that are probably 100 years old or 200 years old. Put the maintenance, have a budget, you're probably reserving the budget to maintain these buildings. And yeah, these, our taxes have gone down significantly in the last five years because the debt has been paid off. So I'm willing to support something here, and I'm sure some of the taxpayers are. But $261 million in an environment where the rates are high. Maybe if you would have did it five years ago when you had zero rates, 2% interest rate, 3% interest rate. The taxpayers are going to keep paying double what they would have paid three years ago. Double. For the same building. And so I, I just, I don't understand how this board... And again, maybe it's not going to be a board. Maybe if we have some fiscally responsible board members here, they're going to say no to this. I doubt it. Otherwise, we probably already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on self-defense. Maybe tens of thousands of dollars. But I just, I just cannot see us moving forward with the progress of this. And, and I, I hope the taxpayers, I, I'm very confident the taxpayers will not approve this. You're fooling yourselves if you think you will.
Again, Keith, I, I, I offer you the opportunity...
I will reach out to Mr. Partner.
Please, please do. One last thing. You mentioned specifically around inefficiencies. I can tell you, throughout our entire process, and many, many factors that were looked at that went into decision-making around this, never once has downsizing of 30, 40, 50 teachers, uh, as it relates to inefficiencies ever been discussed, ever. So if I can provide you with some reassurance around that, when we talk about inefficiencies, it is not inefficiencies directed at staff.
So, and again, maybe it's on the website. Has there been, is there a budget for inefficiency that we picked up by doing this on the websites? How many millions of dollars are going to be saved a year because of this?
We have some estimates in one of the presentations. It's on a certain slide.
I, I will reach out to Dr. Partner.
Just kind of...
Thank you so much. Um, anyone else?
I'm so sorry. I was here a little late. I was looking for the board. I don't change a little bit. I didn't get a chance to sign in with the public committee chief.
We would take your public comment anyway, so please stand up and let us know who you are.
Sure, thank you very much. So, good evening, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Fannerstol Jr., address 1140 East Capitol Drive, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Miller, my prior coach and teacher.
Uh, Mr. Fannerstol, um, there are two meetings scheduled for this evening. Um, during the board session, we are not allowed to discuss employees, unfortunately. Um, is there any way you might be able to come back at 8 o'clock or shortly thereafter?
Don't think so.
You can also, you can email anything to me as well?
Yeah, I know how that, I know how that kind of thing is.
You can do it with...
Email both, yeah.
You certainly could provide something to the board. Check the website. All of our, our names and email addresses are on there. If you want to send an email, we'll be reviewing everything related to that discussion this evening.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry to shut you down. It just kind of comes to the rules.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else?
My name's Rich Gropes. I'm the president of the district. Really wasn't going to talk tonight, but you made a, a comment about reviewing some of the slides and the material that been provided. I have to say, in reviewing some of the materials out there, they're horribly incomplete. So, you've all seen this slide showing the difference in tax revenue between Arrowhead and surrounding communities, correct? It shows that we are roughly $1,500 behind Elm Brook. Well, this slide only touches on tax revenue. 10% of our students have no tax revenue associated with them because they're open enrollees. When you add state revenue, and this is according to the Wisconsin Legislative Fiscal Audit Report, the difference with Elm Brook is just $150 per student. This is not a funding issue. You know, according to this report, Arrowhead is funded at the top 28th percentile in the state of Wisconsin per pupil. 72% of districts have lower funding when you combine tax revenue and state aid. This is not a funding issue. If this referendum is approved, just how high, what percentage increases will our taxes go up? Do we have that data?
Right now.
It's pretty simple. You've got the mill rates there, 106%. That is the jump in the mill rate, 106%. You know, over the life of the school, using the numbers in the survey, the total cost of this school is not $260 million. It is $388 million when the interest is at. Given that $260 million, that sets a new state record. The only record was Verona at 180. So we are looking at spending $80 million more, or 30%, on a single facility. That's a new state record. I would have to agree that a lot of residents are not going to take this very well when they realize their taxes are going up. 106%. I mean, if we look at Milwaukee, that's just taking the, the mill rate. You know, in, in the survey, it said our current mill rate's 180 and would jump by 190 if this is approved. 106%. Milwaukee's referendum that just caused so much controversy was only 250. And that was supporting the entire district with many, many more students. And here we're looking at 260 on just 1,000 students. There were cheaper options.
2,000.
Yeah, sorry. There were cheaper options, right? Much cheaper, significantly cheaper. We could have combined these schools for, what was the lowest estimate? 140? 142, I believe, was the lowest estimate?
173.
The center estimate with an enhanced rebuilding was 180, though. So there are cheaper ways to do this. And I think, you know, for those of you that claim fiscal conservatism, we can find a cheaper method to do this. Thank you.
I would, again, extend any invitation that might be necessary to maybe meet with Jeff Gross, review some of the numbers. If you have any interest, please feel free to reach out. Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else?
I wasn't going to speak. Hi, my name is Amber Carvassie. I've been Arrowhead and Lake Country District. Um, as you guys all know, Lake Country had a referendum this year, and only one of them got passed. I do not know anything the way these men do. I am a teacher, and I can tell you that we put our heart solely into our jobs every single day, and we bust our bottoms to make sure that the children are safe and protected here at work. My sophomore has told me that there are holes in the buildings, which I think even be things. But, as a voter, I can tell you that I've been really unhappy with the things going on at Arrowhead. Particularly, some of the board members, how you've been voting for things, you know, the same places last summer. And those different types of things. And I think you need to think about that when you're reaching out to your voters. Because if my child doesn't feel safe here, are they going... How are the... Sorry, words have escaped me. A word. How is fixing the building going to make them feel safe if they don't feel safe inside the building, if that makes sense? Trying to put my words together, and it's just not coming together. Sorry. Um, I just want you to think about making, making sure we're doing the best for the kids, because really, that's all that matters. And I just want my child to feel safe in all aspects.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We will move on then to, uh, number two on our agenda. Facility and potential referendum report. Uh, discussion and action on the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by 1.9 million per year for four years for non-recurring purposes. I would open it up for any board discussion on this item.
So I think it might be a good idea, Kim, if you'd like to speak, or Conrad, or whoever would like to speak to the fact that this is replacing a $1.7 million per year revenue, uh, authority, revenue limit, or whatever, however you'd like to explain it. So this is not, this is, yes, it's slightly new, it's slightly updated, but this is basically to just kind of keep things moving forward. I don't know if you guys want to explain it better than I just did, but just so the public that's here understands this piece of referendum.
I, I think that sums it up, and I, I think it probably has been reviewed on multiple, multiple occasions for members of the public and, and for anyone looking to, to come to forums to be informed on it. Um, I guess in terms of board members themselves, is there any discussion on this particular point? If not, um, at this point, I would look for a motion on, uh, resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed the revenue limit by 1.9 million per year for four years for non-recurring purposes.
Can I make one more statement? Can I backtrack just for a second? So if Jeff were here, I'm sure he'd explain this 150 times better than I am going to right now. But basically, what's happening at the end of 2024, for anyone in the room that doesn't understand, is um, right now, we are all being charged with an additional mill rate for the $1.7 million per year amount that we voted on five years ago? Five years ago? Um, so that's coming off of your, four years, okay, four years ago. So that's coming off of your taxes at the end of this year. This is basically to bring that back with an extra couple, $200,000 per year, um, to just keep things moving. Alright, just wanted to reiterate that.
I guess I joined in. This is, this is the referendum item that I'm fully in support of. And how that money's been spent over the last four, going on five years, and it's still critical in maintaining our facilities, allowing these older buildings to function as, you know, world-class educational institutions. And so, uh, I think like Chris, in favor of the $1.9 million replacements for the former $1.7 million.
I'd have to agree also. I think this one is more palatable to taxpayers right now than the big ask. But I'm in favor of this one.
Yeah, I think that, uh, I mean, if we hadn't done that one, if that one hadn't passed last time, I mean, we would have been in a situation where we would have been laying off 20 teachers, 30 teachers, and we would have felt it. It would have been bad.
Yeah, that enabled us to do a lot of maintenance repairs and updates and...
And simple things to keep our groups from leaking to keep us running.
Yeah, the, the difference being, for what it's worth, this is an operational referendum. They ask a 1.9 million. Uh, and the difference being that this literally goes to operating costs. Uh, this does not allow us to take on any big projects, make improvements at staff. Uh, you know, any big changes that are more capital expenses. This is strictly operational. Any further discussion with, with the board?
I think that we adopt the 1.9 million dollar referendum question as presented.
Second thing.
Any further discussion? All in favor of adoption of the operational referendum asked as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's a good turn.
Let's turn the...
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, moving on. Our second, uh, resolution. Uh, I'm going to read for clarity. Be it resolved by the school board of the Arrowhead Eugene High School District, Waukesha County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $261,200,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building and facility improvement project consisting of construction of a new high school building, including an auditorium and pool, to consolidate grades nine through 12 into one building on the current campus to improve safety, security, efficiency, and learning spaces, related demolition of current facilities, athletic, athletic facility and site improvements, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. Uh, so we are looking for any further discussion on this, um, resolution. Well, personally, myself, I really grappled with this. Um, after our last workshop, I was pretty much in favor, but since that time, I've really thought a lot about this. Every time I ran for the board, I expressed how fiscally responsible I would be. And the two gentlemen that just talked about that, they really hit home. Um, given the economic climate as it is now, I personally cannot go for this.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I'll just say the same piece that I said last time. Uh, I, from day one, I've, I've said that, you know what, the, uh, the school perceptions survey is very accurate. And, you know, whether, uh, that was positive or negative, uh, I was going to vote with the constituents. So if that could have got above 50% in any of the holdings, or any of the, uh, the votings, uh, I would have voted for it, um, even though, uh, I'm, you know, you know, barring any personal feelings, uh, because I'm here to represent my constituents, which is not just, well, I'm at large, so everyone in the district. So I, I, I also, um, cannot support this because the highest, uh, the highest percentage that, that we had as, uh, as a group, uh, any of the categories was 44%. So I, I'm not supportive of this either.
Brandon, any comments?
I've, uh, given a lot of comments over the last year, so we're here, ready for it.
Okay. Daryl?
Yeah, it's one of those things of, you know, I, I am in favor of it. Um, as I see, you know, it is 44% that were surveyed. Again, it was survey data, so there is that sway of margin of error kind of thing, so it could be, you know, close to that. The other thing that kind of had me, you know, hold was the undecided, where that's at 10%. So there could be a sway, uh, not saying that all 10% are going to go one way or the other. But, uh, I think it, it's a very close, uh, you know, close to that 50%. So for right now, I am in favor of it.
I would have to agree with Daryl. Just being your, on the board, I do recognize how much our school needs a facelift, in Germany, for safety, security, all of the things. There are proven, uh, studies that suggest you do perform better in a lighter environment. And Arrowhead has always been kind of like a bomb shelter since I even went there. So I support it, but my heart weighs heavy on the fact that it is going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money, myself included, and everybody sitting at this table. But I just think that I have a daughter that's going into Arrowhead now, and a younger daughter that will reap all of the benefits of a new school in a lighter, brighter environment. And so with that, I'd have to say I support it. And as we probably know, inflation is probably just going to get worse. So if we just keep maintaining status quo, I don't have any stats or background to back this up, but what will it cost in seven years when, when we're really, when we're, we're really coming apart? Could we have done this five years ago when the interest rates were really low? Well, gosh darn it, I wasn't on the board at that time. And so, you know, you're up against a rock in a hard spot, but I just really, I really think about the future. And, and these kids deserve something light and bright, and, um, something that sets us apart from the rest, so. I, I, I support it. I know it's going to be hard, but we're community merchants together, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree with, uh, a lot of what Lindsay just, just said. I, I do not relish the idea of going to referendum for, for anything. I really had no interest in that at all. I do consider myself a conservative. On the other hand, when I came here as a new board member, and I was, uh, part of a touring group, and went around with Mr. Partner and Mr. Kirk, and took the walk that our students take, I don't know how many times a day, back and forth, back and forth. And I had no, I had no idea that these students are out of eyesight for so long, walking back and forth between the buildings. I made the assumption, not that it's any greater, I made the assumption that, that they're all walking between the buildings right out here in, in full view of everyone. No. They're walking back behind these buildings. Who knows who else is back behind these buildings? That scared the, you know, out of thinking of these kids going back and forth. I do not like that. And we timed how long it takes. Not only how long are they out there, okay, they get then to their, to the next, to the building. So how much time do they have to get to class? Now I know, I guess Julie was always, you know, on, on time for class. It just took him that long to get to the building. So there's that. It, it, security is a huge thing. That's a huge thing. And that would be correct. That tour made a huge impact. Not just... Not just that, but seeing the facilities, going into some of these classrooms, how dark they are, how claustrophobic they are. The whole, some of these classrooms smell like feet. Why do classrooms smell like feet? Because the air circulating is not fantastic. That's not right. It's not right. And all of these folks have done a fantastic job keeping these buildings living along for how many years? They've done an amazing job. I don't know how they did it, truly. But it's not going to go on for much longer before they just completely get, they're well past their life, shelf life, or whatever the word is, the term is. They're well past that. And I'm just waiting for something horribly catastrophic to happen before this is discussed.
Thank you for your questions. Thank you.
I guess I respectfully and briefly will say I disagree. I do appreciate the aspirational vision of my fellow board members who look at the proposals on the table and say, you know, couldn't Arrowhead be spectacular if we did this, if we built this spectacular new center? And it would be wonderful. But the numbers that the two gentlemen in the audience shared were accurate. I mean, in my neighborhood, taxes will go up. You said $1,000 to $5,000. I'm going to tell you that the high end is higher than that. And that's every year for 20 years. I have retirees, like, that $1,000 to $5,000 added tax hit every year is to me a huge deal. And they haven't been shy about talking. I know that instead of increasing everybody's taxes by thousands of dollars, we could increase them by hundreds of dollars and incrementally address the problems with these buildings for a year over a relatively short period, five years. That doesn't give us a brand new school, but it gives us a functional and still improved school for. And I guess it's the security concerns. I have minimal concern about that personally, because I know that there are students who walk much larger, longer distances than the distance between these campuses just to get to school every day. I know that on every college campus in the country, people move from building. I just don't see it as a significant threat. I get the convenience of having a single school, but I think that the costs are prohibitive, and so I vote for it.
I agree with what you said, Tim, about the safety issue too. You know, I was thinking about that, the moving back and forth between campuses. And then you think about all the little kids out at recess. These little kids are outside 20 minutes a day, twice a day maybe. And who could be around there either? Are we going to stop recess too? You know, it's just, I do respect everything that everyone has said here. And I was really in favor of this initially. And then I really thought long and heard about it. And I thought, my husband just retired, and the effect it would even have on us. And I know a lot of retirees also that I talk to, and they're afraid. And so much, just what's going on in the world today and the economic situations and inflation, a lot of people aren't going to be able to afford this. And a lot of the people this would affect the most don't even have children in the schools and won't, you know, their kids are long gone. So I, like I said before, I can't vote for it in good conscience. Tim, do you have any comments you'd like to add at this time?
Sure, I could say a couple things just on my thoughts. So everyone's stake events are obviously valid for all the reasons that are being made. I truly appreciate the number of comments that were made on this topic as well. I, for one, typically am against any type of tax increase, no matter what it is. It's just where I start. From my starting point, I'm a no until I, again, to really understand the ramifications one way or the other. I do believe to the very, very many points made around there, there are other options. There's lesser cost options, lower investment options. Certainly, yes, there are. This is the elite option that was proposed. I participated in the board tour that Mr. Kirk, I think it was Mr. Kirk, that arranged where we toured our, what I would consider our competitive schools. And there were, I think, three or four on the list that we actually walked through as a board and got a pretty extensive tour of those schools. And I look at it from the perspective of the greater additional value that a high ranking and very highly attractive modern school presents for the community. I look at what that does to home values presently as well as in the future. If you look at what deteriorating schools can mean to a community from the livelihood of that community as well as the property value of that community, and not to start naming schools within our general region, but there are schools around and communities around the area where we have seen decline in home value, seen decline in overall educational value because just things, for whatever reason, have slipped in that community. Arrowhead has been extremely fortunate over the last many decades of doing what they have done with the budget that they have, school, the teachers within there, the administration that's in there, as well as the actual product of the students have been extremely lucky. But if we look at the enrollment, and it's declining compared to our neighboring districts that we toured, because they have a different facility to offer than what our current school of Arrowhead facility can offer. We look at what that does to community member, new potential community members moving in that are supposed to be buying the houses to sell, the neighbors to sell. And are they competitive? Is Arrowhead still competitive from that market compared to moving to Hamilton or moving to another school within our competitive area? And that's what I am looking at. And so I know the tax increase is a huge pill to swallow. But when you look at what that doing it could do to your home value, to the neighbor's home value, and the overall decrease in the effect of the greater community, I for one want to put that up to a vote for the entire community based off of how I have conversed and had conversations with constituents that I have talked to. So for that reason, I would support this and supporting it for the vote of the greater community. Community may tell us that it's not acceptable and it fails, so yes, I want to leave it up to that community to say one way or the other.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. Yes. He represents Heartland Lakeside. This has been a really long path. There's been a tremendous amount of time and effort put in by whole teams of people who have spent countless hours trying to provide us, the board, with the necessary data to try to make the best decision possible. At the end of the day, the decision is a really, really tough one. From my perspective, while I absolutely consider myself a fiscal conservative and like Tim scoff at any kind of tax hikes for any reason, I feel that we've had issues in our state for 30 years. Disparities in funding, inequities, and we've suffered at the loss of that funding equation for a long time. Would it, could it, should it? If we had a referendum that would have passed some time ago? Gosh, that would have been great to build a new school years ago when the cost of construction isn't what it is now. That didn't happen. So what do we have moving forward? We have an environment, in my opinion, that is unsafe. From the get-go, I have been quite vocal in my quest to add a minimum at all students at Arrowhead under one roof. At a point in time when every school throughout the country is evaluating their own security measures, tamping things down, trying to keep kids as safe as possible, we have hundreds of kids walking back and forth every day. That, to me, is a problem. So I have genuine concerns over security. The state of affairs and just trying to keep up with maintenance, to look at the $53 million that we would be looking at just to break even on maintenance over the next, what, 10 years or so? And get nothing beyond just trying to keep up with walls and brick and whatever a current existing building. You move to the $173 million level, which, to your point, would put us under one roof if we build out one campus or another. The information that has been shared with the board tells us that if we do that, we end up with a patchwork facility. Yes, everyone will be under one roof, but it's patchwork. Is it ideal? No. To actually make things improved and better, we'll still have to go to another referendum to end up with a decent facility. I don't see that as an option. So there were other options in between, which in polling suggests that it comes out pretty much at parity with where the community polled. So you say start at the top. If we start at the top, we're just putting it out to the public. The public will decide. They will tell us. If the public does not want to spend 261 million on a facility, they will let us know. And we'll rework the plan and we'll go from there. But I'm in favor of asking what we're currently looking at for a lot of different reasons. I think it's the right thing to do. On some level, the least of which too, is that in fact, education is, it's a competitive business. All of the surrounding districts have had millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, investment in those communities. Yes, taxpayers have panted up. Yes, they've increased their taxes because of it, but they're investing in their community. And at the end of the day, if we don't do the same, our community will be the lesser fourth. Potentially, our enrollment will go down, as we've already been hearing. People have come to our school, prospective families, and they're choosing other schools because of the appearance, because of what we offer in our facilities. Our enrollment will go down. As enrollment goes down, it starts a downward slide. I think we're better than that. And I know it's a big ask, but I'm in favor of the ask. We'll see what the public says. Any other comments?
I just find it interesting that it's, you know, listening to everybody talk. I have a lot of respect for everyone on this board. I can agree with parts of comments that everyone's making. So I see all the sides. There's a lot of logic to it.
These are, it's a tough decision. So if there is no further discussion, I will read this once again, and then at the end, I will ask for a motion. Be it resolved by the school board of the Arrowhead Union High School District, Waukesha County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 261,200,000 dollars for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building and facility improvement project consisting of construction of a new high school building, including auditorium and pool, to consolidate grades nine through 12 into one building on the current campus to improve safety, security, efficiency, and learning spaces, related demolition of current facilities, athletic facility and site improvements, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. So I'm looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? I would like to take a roll call vote, starting with Lindsay.
Yay.
No.
Yay.
Yay.
No.
Yay.
No.
Tim?
Yay.
Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Last up, discussion and action on the resolution providing for a referendum election on the questions of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by 1.9 per year for the four years for non-recurring purposes, and an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 261,200,000 dollars. On the initial resolution, the first one listed, and it's quite extensive, and I'm not going to read that whole thing. Are we looking for two separate motions here, Kate, or just one?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
One that encapsulates both?
One that encapsulates both.
Did we, forgive me, did we do a roll call vote on the 1.9? Or did we need to, or how, where is that?
At all.
Okay. Sorry.
I would just comment that, although I can't support the resolution that supports both questions, I didn't go through this great detail and the valid questions, which are separated for polling purposes. And then I find no objection to the format or the terms used, although it's a policy measure.
So the way it was written, you're...
Fine.
It's not like...
Except for the numbers.
It's the numbers that gives them... So it's not like double negatives and a way that like makes you confused on what you're voting for and...
So if we didn't support one, how does that affect the other? You know?
I think you're...
Do we say no if we're a no for the big one, the 261 million?
That's the way I'm...
So we have to say no to the whole thing right here?
I think that's true.
It's written as a singular resolution. It does encompass both of the individual items that we just wrote it on, but it is written as a singular resolution.
So just for my own question. So would this mean that there would be one question then invalid? Or will there still be two questions that they can say they can vote on? Like why? Okay.
It's the legal way you have to do it.
Do you have to bring it together?
To approve the resolution. Then the D has the valid questions on it. They are...
Okay. All right.
Thank goodness we have a lawyer on the table.
Well, I thought so, but now I was second guessing myself, and I just wanted to be like...
It's a good question, and it is something that we've talked about throughout our process. That's, in fact, by the time it hits in November, there would be two separate voteable items to the public.
Thank you so much.
No, no, of course. Okay.
So you need a motion for...
A motion for the approval of this resolution that includes both referenda questions as written.
I can say I make a motion.
Good. Yes, you can.
Okay, good. So I'm so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote once again on approval of this language as written. Again, we'll start with Member Wood.
Yay.
Nay.
Yay.
Yay.
Yay? No. Number others?
Yay.
Thank you. Thank you again, everyone. The motion passes. Okay, we've moved out of the heavy in the whole agenda. Onto the superintendent's report.
No formal report, just things are moving nicely towards preparations for the start of the school year, so we're happy to be into it, thick into the hiring, thick into curriculum work, thick into preparations for the new schedule, and a lot of people doing a lot of work for these weeks.
Before we get too far out, I do want to, I neglected, to really thank everybody. I think tonight's vote really is the culmination of many, many months of very hard work from the whole team sitting back there, our superintendent, and the board. And I truly have great respect for the amount of effort and time that's been put into this and the difficulty of the decision. So I thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the meeting minutes for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four interview, which gave us Member Wood, our meeting minutes for regular Board of Education, and the June eighteenth workshop minutes. Additionally, the bill payments report is included, the donations, the personnel report. All of these are in here. I would like, if possible, Ms. Angelie, to, Member Angelie, to review any donations that were brought to us this month.
Sure. That's a good one. In June, Dorner Manufacturing made a donation of two hundred fifty dollars to Technology and Engineering Partnership Program. So thank you very much to Dorner Manufacturing.
Thank you. Are there any items in the consent agenda that the board wants to pull out for any specific individual conversation?
I do, just an acknowledgement. I know for the personnel report, there's a resignation for Carol Whitehouse. Just want to say that's with deep regret. Just, two of my children had her as a teacher, and she was a wonderful English teacher and very highly respected amongst my daughters and their classmates. So it's there.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I am entertaining a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First up in our committee reports this evening is our Chairwoman Hammer with curriculum.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a meeting on June twentieth. Adam Bold presented the Arrowhead Citizenship Initiative, which discussed bullying, negative comments, anything that emotionally negatively or positively may affect students. We talked about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that's done every other year here, school climate survey, which is driven by Arrowhead, that's done every year, BES, which is Brief Emotional Screening Surveys, which includes student names, if I'm correct about that, and a lot of surveys. So we talked about those and the deadlines and things like that, and what we might want to move forward with, what we might want to look into opting out, or how that would work. So, Adam, do you want to add anything to...
No. With the citizenship initiative, like I told the board, we'll bring you forward in August, the lessons that we have prepared before we give them to the students, one point five ready, with audience members that had a hand in making some of those lessons, making it way that that's turning out. And then, and we talked about August or September, make a review in the surveys that we conduct with students, just to get some decisions on there. So we...
Thank you. We also, we're looking at the graduation date, which always seems to be a topic every year, because some of the kids on the track team are unable to make it in time for graduation. Adam Kirk was on vacation at the time, and he needs the biggest input, so we'll talk about that in the future. We were thinking possibly August to discuss if we could move it to a different date or not. There always seems to be some kind of issue, but that is something upcoming. Then we had the director's report with Sue. Do you want to talk about that and summarize it?
Sure. I highlighted with the curriculum committee, the professional development that we're engaged in this summer with teachers, getting ready for the block with participation techniques, total participation techniques. We had Mastery Connect, which is a tool that we're using to align assessments and standards to be able to progress monitor students in some of our key areas of growth. I had a professional development day around that, and then I shared some of what Eric Larson presented to teachers as part of a PD day on our annual data and growth, their identified growth and areas of improvement, and some discussion around some strategies to get us of our academic improvements was shared. We also just identified some of our curriculum work that's happening, and departments will have ready for the websites, department and course curriculum documents for transparency.
Thank you. And that was basically our meeting, and our next reading date is sent for July eighteenth at six forty-five a.m.
Thank you very much. Anything for Finance and Legislation Committee to report?
Something to report. Of course, I have a meeting next Monday, but there's no topics to cover, so we're going to push that to ours.
Sounds good. Thank you. Chairman Benneker, building your grounds, anything there?
No meeting since our last board meeting. We do have a scheduled date for Thursday, August eighth, the next committee pending agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to Personnel, Chairman Benneker.
So there are two elements. There's a new employee handbook that I'm going to ask Conrad to address for the board, and then we have an upcoming meeting on July twenty-ninth that's just been scheduled this week. I never say this about Personnel, but this is an all-hands-on-board meeting, so I'd like everybody to be there. We're going to do Conrad's review, and we're going to have some contract discussions, and so there will be elements of this that will be closed session, and board members own. And so, you want your voice to be heard, this is one to show. And it's... Yeah. I tried to avoid it.
Appreciate that.
Similar to the support staff handbook that the board approved a couple of months ago, we have the teacher employee handbook before the board this evening. We've got quite a few weeks to look at the draft. There's really not substantive changes as far as how daily operations are going to go on. It's a very different handbook compared to what we had in place, from one hundred ninety pages to forty-five, and then forty-two. So it's a much more concise document, and it's going to be a learning year for us, but there may be things that we discover that we missed from the old one, and we'll transfer it to the new one. So we, everybody knows, are going to be flexible with this coming year, but we'd ask for approval of this handbook this evening for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Good, thank you.
Unless there's discussion.
Unless if there's any further discussion with the board, I would look for a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five Arrowhead Educator Handbook.
I'm going to make that motion, and with the comment that I was pleased to see the adoption of the new book, I brought Conrad over because of his history in Personnel, and he's brought over essentially to see the bird, and I think that it's a fresh start, new way of looking at things, and please see it presented.
I'll second. Any further comments? I would just add, but I love that it's concise. Anytime we can kind of whittle things down, hundreds into the, you know...
We kept some, we added to it. This has some Arrowhead stuff in it, so it's, it's a good start.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, so all in favor of the adoption of the educator handbook, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to Chairman Ferris with Policy.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a riveting and short meeting yesterday.
That was fantastic.
It was. It was.
I was there. I know.
Yeah, it was a whole new thing for us in Policy. We got out, I think, close to seven thirty. Our main focus was really to focus on Policy twenty-two sixty-four, to make sure that we're compliant with federal regulations that are happening right now that keep shifting and changing, and new, you know, new challenges. So it all has to do with Title IX for reasons of legal issues, and our, Richard Zimmerman also suggested it's a good idea to potentially table this. Not adopt anything at this time. I know that seems to, there's going to be more to come on this, maybe quickly. There might be a meeting before next month, but as of right now, we have a meeting scheduled for August sixth. And so right now, twenty-two sixty-four is out there, but there's no further discussion on it that we had yesterday. Policy twenty-two forty, controversial issues in the classroom, is going to be discussed at the next meeting, so please join us. And we're also going to be talking about an update on how the cell phone challenges has gone in schools and in classrooms.
Super, thank you. Okay, moving on to other reports, just a reminder that the WASD conference is being held this weekend, Friday, Saturday, eleventh to twelfth, up in Green Bay. I believe Ms. Angelie is planning on attending. I guess you plan on going as well. I'm not sure if anyone else is registered, but we can hopefully bring back some good information to share with the board and report out from now. Yes.
Exactly.
The WASD stuff is worth trying. I always tease buttons and girl, do you see some... I mean, I'm not so sure about that one. You will always walk away with something that you can use in this room if you go to a WASD conference or something. But it paid me to say that.
Okay, and CISA? What'd you got? Okay, okay, thank you for the contribution. Okay, on to new business. First up, we have discussion and action, annual action, to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four school safety drills report. Everyone's had an opportunity to review the report. Do we need an overview, a broad picture on this, or has everyone looked at it? And it's the same as every year. But for some of our newer members, if there's any additional information we need, now would be the time. If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school safety drills report.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up on our new business is discussion and annual action to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four seclusion and restraint report. Again, board member I has been on this. Any questions, any discussion on this annual report?
I would ask Adam Bold to comment on it, and frankly, the percentages of increase are concerning. I'm sure there's an explanation.
Yep, online situations, students were putting themselves in horrible situations. We had one student that required five of the nine restraints. We avoided restraint in the first three incidents where they blocked the building in order to corral the student and direct back into the building. Got to the point where we were crossing roads, we were trespassing. We had a community member talk about possible firearms being pulled on the students, and it was at that point where we would enter into oversight, just to make sure that the student was safe and calmed down. We worked with Jen Townsend, who was our educational consultant, and we were able to find a solution. And I think that we had a rocky April and two A, about one episode of COVID, but after implementing some sensory diet, strategized with tools that we purchased as well, the rest of the school year was, we hope that we have the sensory diet program in place now.
I have, I know one kid, and these are all special editions, and they all come to the table like all of us, with varying needs and abilities, attitudes, and, you know, naughtiness. And so if we have one kid taking jack up the numbers because he happens to be the kind of kid who needs restraint, I'm not worried about that, but we've got a lot of kids that are being restrained here. Is there an explanation as to why the numbers of students involved have increased so dramatically?
The disabilities, the number of your disabilities have changed. So, I mean, two freshmen, one with autism, hit his head violently against the wall. Another freshman threatening to cut himself, sophomore eating a lot of food. Not too occasional. So we don't want that, the parents don't want that, no parent had a problem with us during the restraint. Agreed with them on the situation. Like I said, on our one with five, we held off on it for a month because we're not going to let a kid hurt himself. So at this...
I appreciate your mentioning of the parents' reaction. On that basis, if you're ready for a motion?
You know, I just have a quick question. I guess when I was participating in the most recent WASD and Policy Resolutions Committee meetings, there were resolutions brought to WASD on this topic, kind of addressing the seclusion and restraints policy that WASD holds. And the discussion there suggested that, as a whole, the number of, not the number perhaps, but the severity of disability coming into schools has kind of accounted for this type of rise pretty universally? Is that, that's what I was hearing? Can you comment on that?
That's, I haven't heard that it's on the rise in general. That's, I haven't heard that it's on the rise in general. I tend to focus just on the students in front of us at Arrowhead. I know that there are groups around the state that have their eyes on it and always want to see the number go down, and the number should be low. You know, like, seclusion and restraint is our last option, but sending a kid home healthy and safe is our number one priority. So we do the balancing test. I'm brought in on almost every single situation, or radioed shortly thereafter. We have cameras. Or we would talk to them, we need to go to their shops out in the community. We don't have that capability. We time all of them for how much time the students are restraining. Usually it's pretty low, with some of the students this year. They're high. Also, the definition of what is a restraint has changed over the years, where any time that we're helping enough students not hurt themselves with any force against their their will, so. Not great. We don't like doing it, but it's a price saving, so.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Anything else? If not, we're looking for a motion for approval?
Recapitulons there in Student Services reports saying we accept the report.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approval of the seclusion or restraint report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last up under new business is discussion and annual action on adopting academic standards. Again, another annual motion that the board looks at. Pretty straightforward. Does anyone need to have any clarification or input from administration?
I would have a question for Sue. Is this the exact same one we get every year?
Same one, and the website is updated manually to reflect any updates to standards, but yeah. Same one you get every year.
Okay. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the academic standards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adoption of the 24-25 curricular standards, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is any future agenda items?
So maybe just making our reminder, because we traditionally have that annual meeting in August, but if they just move to October, is that October is the correct date for the annual meeting, right?
You know, last I heard, we were looking, we were looking at a bounce, but I don't think we bounced it. Are we still, Bernard, are we still on board with the annual meeting for October? It's a good time.
I just remember.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? If not, I'm looking for a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, starting with Member Wood.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Member Evers?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are in closed session.